Is there a motion to go back to the regular session? Mr. Sam? PM, Mr. Yarac, that's what I need is made motion to go back into regular session. All of them say or say aye. Earlier, the public comment section, I think, I offered the sheriff's partner chat to talk by email. I mean, make comments in our, you know, I can, we can reopen from the comments. You wanted to address the commissioner's court. We won't be able to take action, we could come back at a later time and take action, but, but we can open it up. And Jeff, who else is there?
Yes, sir.
Mr., thank you. Uh, Mr. Paza?
Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners, I appreciate the time. First and foremost, behalf of my family, want to thank all of y'all for everything you're doing. We understand right now during this pandemic, y'all are making very crucial decisions for our community. So want to know that it is appreciated. Uh, I'm here today, stand before you. Uh, if you don't know me, my name is Angel Lengas Paza. I'm originally from Aral Tejas, uh, came to become a resident here in Toluca. I now live here, I reside here, I vote here. I exercise everything else that every other citizen does from here. I love this community. I was proud to serve this community as a deputy sheriff under the Rodriguez administration here for about a year. I was recently terminated on June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty. Uh, the reasons I was terminated for, I was advised, was for insubordination. Uh, I requested documentation on that day twice. I was denied twice, uh, to have those legal documents as far as the investigation, the reason why it happened, how it went about. Um, I can personally say this is a retaliation. Uh, I am going to say I am very proud of this county for recognizing and seeing that there was a need in this office. So that they voted someone else into office. I'm very proud because there is a need. I can tell you firsthand, personal experience, that the sheriff's office is a toxic and hostile work environment on a daily basis. Working the streets, we made contact with people on a daily basis. Traffic stops, calls out on the interstate and everything like that. And I can tell you that we are sick and guessing ourselves on daily basis. Because after every stop, after everything we do, we are, know that, we are criticized, questioned. And without a doubt, it comes with the job, we know what we signed up for, we know that in any capacity like this, it's going to happen. But why is it on a constant time like this? About a year ago, a lot of people will say I made the mistake, but I stand by it. We had a department meeting right here with everybody. I spoke up, I addressed some issues I believe needed to be addressed because it's just the right thing to do. Since then, a target was put on my back. Anybody that I've worked with can tell you, I've done my job to the best of my ability. I was efficient and I've done everything in good faith. When you get terminated as a peace officer, there are several things that go by where you can get, uh, honorable discharge, dishonorable discharge. And I believe the other one is just general discharge, okay? I was given a dishonorable discharge. Dishonorable discharge is usually given to those who have been arrested while on duty, who have performed crimes. Who have been accused of doing other things. And with those accusations comes strong evidence to support those accusations, okay? The insubordination, I was yelled at by a supervisor in front of citizens that we serve on a daily basis. That should not go about. If I will gladly take any constructive criticism, I will be yelled at and cussed at, I do not care. As long as it is behind closed doors where it should be, the way it should be done. You punish in private and you're praising the public, that's just simple things. Being yelled at by a supervisor in front of citizens that we serve in front of taxpayers, what is that telling them? We, they can walk all over us. People will always talk about us, I, it comes with the job. Everybody who's watching, it does come with the job, I understand that. Being told to, by the administration, to arrest elected officials such as yourself. If you, if we ever come in contact with y'all, whether we're on a stop and y'all come up, JPs, commissioners. If we see certain commissioners riding around in, uh, ATV vehicles on public roadways, that's not the way it should be. I have no political affiliation, no political ties, because I'm not from here. I did vote here, I registered to vote here, and I will say it openly, I voted. Because I recognize the change, and obviously so did the people, because a change was made. People are always complaining from our administration, well, from the administration I worked under. The fire department gets this, the fire department gets that, they have this, they're glorified. Well, I can tell you one thing that you want to know why, they document everything, they show numbers, they show stats. I can say straight up, I know our administration has not done that. Operation Stone Garden, we lost that grant from my understanding. There's a reason other employees won't speak up and it's inferior retaliation. I have nothing to lose anymore, so I will be their voice, I will speak up. I'd like to know that I'm going to be filing an appeal through the state, through the state office of, uh, admin hearings, for that dishonorable discharge. I'm trying to provide for my family. I've done everything in good faith, I've served this community, I wish to, maybe wanted to continue serving this community. But until then, I have not been able to serve this state anymore because of that dishonorable discharge. It's hard. I'm trying to provide for my family. You go from working in the streets, being a police officer, to not construction. I have no shame in saying that and doing that. But I'm no longer at this office and it's still hard to catch a break because of retaliation, because I spoke up. I said, well, we're right, doing the things that are right. The day that we were all outside for elections, initially with, uh, Miguel Rodriguez had won for sheriff. We all know everything that happened, uh, initially he had won. Looks right to my left or standing next to me, shake my hands, and the first words out of his mouth. That day and the following day with a department meeting with everybody else present, is, I will remember every single one of my employees that didn't support me for the next four years. What does that say? I can tell you that that same night, that Miguel Rodriguez was initially elected sheriff for another four years, a lot of us were already looking for jobs. Because we weren't going to serve under this administration any longer. It's, I'm sorry?
What you would?
This, this, this. And then, you know, within the following weeks, the recount was done and it showed that the department won. There are things that has happened in that office that the public doesn't know about, I'm, I don't even think y'all know about. I'm not sure how it falls exactly, but, uh, utilities department, the parking wreck, all the guys that are backed there by the Dollar General and everything, who does that fall under? Is it per each commissioner or?
No, it, it's all under part.
Okay.
All the part Robert.
So, so they, they, they use, they utilize county vehicles, such as we do, we utilize county units. Which needless to say, you've seen our units, you've seen that they're not in the best shape. The sheriff will always go back and say, it's, it's on the deputies, it's on the deputies, it's on the deputies. I can personally say that a lot of us or the deputies I served with take pride in fixing their units on their own time. On their own time fixing it on themselves. This all goes back to leadership. Like I say, I can say so much, but at the end of the day, he's already leaving. I'm praising God that he is. Because this county deserves better, this county is about to see what it is to have a true public servant now, serving them. There was one case where I was starting my shift and we had a vehicle accident reported somewhere on nine thirty-five. Anybody who knows how those accidents can get, know that people are distracted driving, will run into them. Okay? I initially started my shift, I got on my patrol unit, the call came out. I did what we're signed up to do, what we, we do on a daily basis. I turned on my lights and sirens, I responded to render rate, to do what I'm supposed to do, to help, to protect and serve. During that time, an issue happened with one of my tires on the unit. I was not able to fix it due to the location I was at, because of the dangerous spot we'd be in if I'd be there fixing the tire on the side of the road. Due to the fact that we had calls pending within county. I had to do something fast, I tried contacting my chain of command, nobody was available. Finally, one of the supervisors I contacted said, hey, get a tow truck out there, we'll do. Tow truck was taken out there to achieve the unit to bring it back. Why am I being told a week later through email, through the county email, that whatever trophy was given is going to be taken out of my paycheck? Will you be all, would you all be doing that to any of those other parking wreck workers? It's a county unit. Why are those three hundred, four hundred dollars, because you know they're, they're not cheap? Why is it going to be taken out of my paycheck when I was performing my duties? When I should be equipped with the proper stuff? It's ridiculous.
All right.
It's ridiculous. If you want to go more into detail, I can tell you more into detail about things that have happened in that office. It's like I said, I have nothing to lose, but this dishonorable discharge just was hurting me. I can't do what I love to do, since I've been a little boy, I wanted to serve and protect. I enjoy helping people.
You requested public information. No one's responded by this time?
No, sir.
Then the information is in public, so.
Like I said.
I'll speak to my team tomorrow, I'll believe you to release. Our record, whatever appears out and be released.
Because I, I am doing this appeal, like I said, on the day of my termination, I was terminated by Jose Garcia and I don't keep, which is the captain and the chief. I was called at nine fifty in the morning, be here by ten. Here I am thinking, there's something going down, uh, there's some type of emergency situation, I come on tactical pants, I'm rushing over here to the courthouse. Look to find out here, sign this paper, you're gone. Tell me the reason why, they explained insubordination for this case and it says forth for this case, okay? Show me where you conducted your investigation. Whether you guys or the, or another agency, show me what your findings were, show me where the complaints were, show me everything. No, I was denied that. I asked a second time before I left that office, another no. Finally, a third time, I reached out with my attorneys, sent an email saying, this is the third documented intent, I need that paperwork. So I know what I'm up against when I go for this appeal. They said they received the email, but like the judge says, I have yet to hear anything. Why are they hiding so much? I'm pretty sure that since I've left and since they've found out that I've gotten legal representation, they're starting to dig at every little thing, and they're going to find a bunch of different things, David. But that's after the fact of this termination for those alleged things. I'm not here trying to get my job back, because I will certainly not work under this administration.
Do they only did it on you or everybody?
I'm sorry?
Did they do it just on you or do you think they did it?
This was just me, sir. So I'm not trying to get my job back, because I would certainly not work under this administration. Again, I'm glad this is a live feed, so I can tell anybody who's ever wanting to apply here under this administration, go away. This isn't a place for you. Not under this administration.
We, we've re-possessed all, you know, resources with the treasures office. To deal with the ELC person by law, that set up to take complaints from ELC complaint. And they're protected to that extent under, under the law. Now. So whatever been filed on record, you know, there's, there's, uh, evaluations or whatever should be filed with her. You know, it's possible he hasn't, separate. But you wouldn't know how many times it's written up, you wouldn't know how many times he's been evaluated, you know? You might, you know, if it existed or not existed.
Of course, and to the best of our knowledge, there's been no evaluations, huh? I served there maybe one week short of one year.
So, when you requested the information, there's no evaluations, there might be pay increases, your hire date, interest information, it probably about all Mary's gonna have.
Of course, yes.
You know, but theoretically, you're going to be filed.
Within each.
Job performance standards, whatever it is filed with, with the human resources, you know, but they do their own, so I can't say yes or no. Uh, what you can do when you get your county attorney to say, hey, okay, we want you to follow up on the local record request, and they respond timely, did it respond timely? Because you have rights. You, if you didn't get a response when Jim got the permission, then you go to the DA or the attorney general. The attorney general will make him provide the information you requested, it can't be information that's not existent, to be made up, so. You know, it's made up, you challenge each one of them, one was made, it's looked at the computer, it's a secret file, it's created, you know, it's very hard to come back and make up stuff.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and, and you brought a lot of stuff here that I think could probably come back and address the commission's word if we needed them. You know, I think some of it is factual and probably could be cleared up, you know? You know, uh, there's been a number of grants that have been available that have not been pursued, you know, Popps Grant, uh, Best Grant. There's been a number of funding opportunities that the fire department chose with the grants, they're very active under grant, too. But, but that falls onto the administration. The only I can tell you, it used to be kind before that, that there's only seven or nine officers, and then it occupied over three times the resources that were there before. You know, but if they don't get there, they don't follow up or that's part of the filter.
It does, sir, it does, and it goes back to the personnel. I've served with everybody on the streets, I can say that they're dedicated individuals. Uh, a lot of people ask why we're not, why they're not proactive, I can tell you, reports are a big thing. Reports will always be done when they need to be done, we're very, they're very understandable about that, we're very understandable of that. But, uh. When you have to do reports for the smallest, silliest things, don't get me wrong, not that, 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 every call means something.
And, and I'd like to come back, because if you had an emergency, a traffic stop, your commission to support, uh, provide water, and then they help many things. If they're going to get arrested for interfering, if they show up, then you know, it's a problem.
I know that, because there's been enough.
It might be heat of the moment, you know, it might be heat of the moment, but still, what's it said, it's said.
And, and we have, I'd like to say when I was working there, we had a good related working relationship with fire department, with NCN LPD, with other agencies we serve around, and that's the way it should be. Unfortunately, in my perspective, he's just dressing up playing Texas Ranger and we live in the DPS glorifying days, and it's not that anymore. Look where we're at, there have been times where I have been the only deputy working in this whole county. There is a, there's enough resources, enough officers to be able to schedule two, at least per shift. But there have been times where I have to respond all the way to NCN at two, three in the morning for an emergency situation, and halfway to NCN, I get a call, hey, there's something going downtown here in Toluca. What do I do, play any mini manimal, uh, NCN gets it, or they get it? There, I'm very thankful, and we have awesome dispatchers that we work with, whatever show, hey, give whatever truck there, let them bring peace to the situation, and come over here, let me deter everything here, then go back where they handle that. Shouldn't have to be that way. There's enough resources, enough manpower to do the right scheduling, to do the right thing to where we're all safe. Because you all see what's happening every day to law enforcement officers, especially now in this time. Well, those are just some of the concerns that I, I want to address, want to let you know that I will be going through with that appeal. If it does need be, get to it, I will do, go forward with the lawsuit, if need be. But I just want to address those concerns with you.
The hardest thing is if you need to get your documents, get your files.
I can't do anything without that, and I've been denied.
Most of the employees that have worked here, we've always given them the records. But I'll speak to my team as after, and if we need to come back to this, we can, but we can't interfere in the function of that office.
Yes, sir.
You know, all we can do is with the record management, and whatever the fact says we can, and we'll go, go from there. But as far as the records, I think the time's running out, I'll verify with my team, if I like to reduce that information.
Appreciate it.
You know, unless they, you know, because if they requested an extension or a clarification from the attorney general, you should have had some of the writing. But they said it's either a riddle address or foot address, you know, I don't know. But we can follow up, I mean, I'd like to contact information, and I'm glad you, uh, got to that, and maybe, maybe there's some resolution to this.
I hope so.
But, uh, I'll do a follow-up, you can do my team, and then from there, uh, see what records we have, but you're probably very limited on what you have here. The rest probably be the sheriff's office.
Sure. Appreciate your free time, thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, you want to go back and start at the minutes and the bills and everything else? Well, 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 wait, wait, we got Mr. Patterson here, and. He worked on our insurance coverage. Would Mary have to submit it anyway, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, good afternoon, Judge Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Hope you all are doing well. Well, we have the, uh, the renewal for the health insurance, your dental, the vision and life insurance. And, uh, there are some, uh, actually it's good news, we got some good news and some great news. The good news, I always say, is that if you don't have a rate change, increase, that's good news. In this case, for the health and the dental coverage, we had a decrease in premium, which I consider that to be great news. Uh, so for this coming year, uh, the South County had a one point five premium reduction under the health plan. And a two percent on the, under the dental. The life and vision has no change, will remain the same as the prior year. Um, so that's one. Uh, on the other, uh, tag is adding, uh, what they call the EAP, the Employee Assistant Program. Which encompasses the, the wellness program, counseling, and some other things for this coming year. I will provide some vouchers, brochures for, uh, for the employees, uh, down the road. We're planning on having the open enrollment done, uh, the last part of September through the middle of October. So that, uh, uh, Mrs. Tedes and her staff have the opportunity to submit all the information under the, I believe it's the Oasis Pro. Uh, uh, computer, a program that TAG has to input all the information. And let me see, and that, that is about it, as far as the coverages, they all remain the same. There's no changes in coverages, uh, will remain the same as you currently have right now. Any questions, Judge Commissioners?
Basically, the health insurance went down one point five percent, the dental, dental plan went down two percent, and there's no change in the life and vision.
That is correct.
Well, I know you've been on top of it, I know you've answered a lot of questions for our employees and continue to provide assistance. Assistance individually, uh, as employees need help. So.
That is correct, Judge.
Thank you for the work that you're doing for us.
Thank you all for the opportunity.
And I don't know if anybody has any questions for Mr. Patterson? But we're required to renew it.
Yeah, that is, uh, it, it needs to be signed and submitted back to TAG by August eighteenth, Judge.
So we would need to, also to approve new rates as presented by Texas Association of County, to the tracker?
I'll make it possible.
Is there a tracker? The motion's been made in second, do you have any questions for us?
No, not, no, Judge, uh, I don't have any questions, uh, uh, like I said, I just think it's, it's good news that we have some, uh, some reduction in premium. That always helps under this, uh, environment that we're living now, at least we got a little, little reduction in premium.
Well, thank you for everything you do. You're.
You're welcome, Judge.
You look orange. You're filthy, you're formating, you look orange. Are you there? Um, but all of them say or say aye?
Aye.
All of the both at the same time. Uh, the motion carries. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge, thank you Commissioners, have a great afternoon.
All right, thank you. Now, we have Mr. Snowden here. I'm glad that you could bring us up to, they, I think I have it on the agenda.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Where do I have you? Number twenty-three. Yeah, um. Inspector Poco Action on Two, Tex dot resolution, a resolution for the TPIF program. And I have Hossi sending a letter to you as we speak. So, Mr. Snowden, if you could let us know.
Yes, sir, Judge, can you hear me okay? Um, you, the, the South County was awarded earlier this month, uh, text, uh, grant amount in the, uh, of seven million four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for, as part of the County Transportation Infrastructure Fund grant. And the next steps for us to start to draw the money down would be to pass a resolution allowing authority to enter into the grant agreement itself. And then the text out from there should award and allow you to start drawing on it, well, within the next two to three weeks.
Mr. Snowden? Judge?
Yes, sir.
This is based on the, uh, what we'll submit on the report, right, about those projects?
Yes, sir, we, we gave them a list of projects which were quite a bit more than what they awarded us, but, uh, yeah, the, the amount of the grant was actually based on the amount of oil and gas that you've produced, based on severance taxes and drilling permits and, uh, uh, overweight permits and discharged chemical and waste material.
And, and what I was going to get at, Commissioner Fitting Three also got a separate funding from, uh, the, uh, was rigid to sort of picking four, uh, he used to send a thousand in permission, they said, um, four gun, one point eight million. And I don't know where the priority was on what they submitted to Tex dot, um, for that project. Did you put Elm Street first on your check sheet? Yeah, so basically it frees up some money that he was planning to use on the Tex dot transportation fund, but now he can move elsewhere. And was this a project that he can do that, restore our time list?
Is that a question for me, Judge?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, we, we do have those, and by the way, congratulations to the county on that category six funding of the almost three million dollars. You know, it's worth mentioning that when I called Tex dot and asked them, talked to them about that, I asked them if any of surrounding counties got that money, and they said, no, they didn't even apply. So, good for the South County that you were on the ball and, and applied for the funds, but yes, we're able to revise our priority list now that you've received that funding. And we can move those projects down, or we can complement with the funding from that grant of the category six plus this transportation infrastructure fund grant.
Because, uh, what I think on this, on this funding on the federal revenue. Part of the thing on the construction funding on the Federal River Bridge and the Elm Street. On thirty-four oh eight is that. It's possible it's not enough money. And we have previously set agreements called ASA to text dot. And they were supposed to give us credit for allowing the work that we did because on the common on the road, there were some bridges already replaced. There were state bridges. So they're kind of backpedaling on that because they require a twenty percent match. But based on their own rules, we already met that match requirement. And it's possible we asked them for a copy of uh their estimate on how they came up with the replacement. And they haven't come up. They're, I think they're using a per foot. You know, basis based on the circle and adding some type of a. Uh, consumer price index calculating to the original cost. But it really needs to get a very truthful uh uh estimate. And I think they understand and are gonna work with us, but it. The words may go up with those two bridges for both of the commissioners. Uh, and we're trying to get to where we don't have match. Uh, we've already met it. So the thing is, if Commissioner. Pretenice three, if Commissioner Pretenice four had brought or cables project and now they're being funded separately. Can they move down? You know, the list and do another project. And your your answer is yes.
Yeah, yes, sir. We'll have to modify our list submitted to text out. We can do that one on a monthly basis, uh change priority and. Add or remove projects.
Perfect. Go do that project because I think you might get funded. Well, you have funded. Because we've been pushing at this for a while, so thank you. But for the time being, we got the county transportation. Uh, Infrastructure Fund uh Grant Agreement. And. Yeah, this is about a month you can start. So we need to uh. Execute it. Get it from get it sent back to you.
Yes, sir. If you can act on the resolution entering into the grant agreement.
And what is the amount?
Judge, it is uh seven million four hundred twenty-six thousand. Seven hundred seventeen dollars.
What is the county match?
One million eight fifty-six. Six seventy-nine.
Alright.
Or it is with fifteen something. Five million something. Match, we made, we matched eighteen fifty-three, so we get a. Fifty something, uh, five million something?
Well, you're gonna get actually two million dollars more and Commissioner is gonna get actually minimum of uh. Credit for the match. If we don't get credit that is money out of, it has to be matched. But if they give us credit for it, then then it's better. You're supposed to. So but for now, this is the first part. This is a text dot, um. Of seven million four hundred twenty-six thousand seven seventeen. And the minimum amount, the county match is one million eight hundred fifty-six thousand six seventy-three. And I wrote it in on the consent. And then I'll get the letter. I know you've done a lot of work and you've been reaching out to them and it's all worked. So uh. We would need to uh. Follow this and execute it. I think there's a deadline in July, right, for this one?
Yes, sir. We we want to get it back to them as soon as possible so we can. Get the funds formally awarded to the county.
So we would need a motion through all variety, the contract between. County LaSalle and. State of Texas Department of Transportation. Um. To enter into chapter two fifty-six uh. Uh. Grants. With the county submitting a match of. One point eight million dollars.
I'll make that motion again.
Motion's been made in seconds. Yeah, thanks for the work.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Judge, and uh. Uh, I'll reach out later to get the copy of that resolution. That you just approved and uh we'll send it right to text dot and get going.
Well, I'm gonna give it to Margie later. I don't think they find it. And uh. She'll have it for you.
Okay, that'd be great. I'll I'll touch base with her.
Is there anything else you need from us? There is a point. Well, thank you very much. All those who say aye, aye. All who oppose at the same time. Motion carries.
Thank y'all.
Make a guess. Number twenty-six on time clocks.
Uh, since the pandemic started, uh you all recommended that the employees quit using time clocks. I've been using time sheets since. The. The treasurer's office would like to go back to time clocks. I understand that. Um, there are at least three new places that are coming online. Two of them in Encinal at the that same building, one for the nutrition side and one for the administrative side. And the dispatch center at the E O C does not have time clock. So at the minimum, we need to buy at least three. Uh, there is R F I D or uh N F C cards. That will allow the employee to basically touch the clock with their card to clock in and out instead of using their handprints like we've been doing. There are some clocks that are used only by two or three people. Uh, that could be used. I believe the fire department may be using their clocks already. Their their current clocks, the biometric ones with the handprint. Courthouse is not. The detention center is not. Road and Bridge is not and so forth. Uh, I passed out the price that I got from them way back in May on per clock. An addition of how much the cards would cost. For us to use those proximity card readers. The card could be included with the county logo. Uh, the seal, the courthouse picture, the employee picture, whatever it is that we want on there. And we will need to order those individually, but we can get them for about the same price as what's on that paperwork. At the at the minimum, like I said, we need three. At maximum, we need fourteen now. If you want to replace all the. Hand scanners. I believe the hand scanners were about five thousand dollars a piece, if I remember correctly. I know it was somewhere in that area. But they weren't cheap. These are are less expensive. It is a proximity card reader, not biometrics. In order to prevent buddy punching so that somebody doesn't show up with somebody else's card and clocking or. They leave early and I clock them out with the card later. The system has built in photo. It'll take a picture of whoever scanned. So when you tap your card there, it's gonna snap a picture who did it. So if the card shows up with somebody else's name, we know that we've got some problems. That need to be addressed, including uh some criminal charges is what it would sound like to me. Any questions on where the clocks are, where we need them?
How much do you think is gonna run to a Kansas senior card?
Right right there in front of you, Judge? Under your nameplate? Under your nameplate? I talked to him today just to make sure the court was still valid. He said it was. Uh, they're about twenty-three hundred each. Which, like I said, it it it's half of what we paid for these original biometric ones. We we have issues with biometric, nothing extraordinary, but my wife gets her nails done. They're bigger this time. Now we gotta log her back in again.
Well, we. Let's go to the card. I mean, it has to be done.
That'll avoid that if we go to the cards. That'll avoid that for all.
We go to the card. And you can still buy cards if you need them?
Yes, sir. But and if we could get a group of cards like it's shown here, right, yes, he said, how many employees? I said, just give me a number for three hundred. But as we get employees. No matter what the turnover is, we can order cards individually if you want their picture on it. I know that was a discussion way back in April. If you want their picture on, we can order them. Take three or four days to come in. In the meantime, we can assign them a card to hear this is what you're gonna use. When their card comes in, we swap it out and give them that one.
I would think about the situation.
Yes, sir. These cards come with numbers and if I assign you the card. And then six months from now you leave, that card can be reassigned to someone else. We don't have to get rid of it. Now, if you take their picture and put it on there. Then, yeah, we're gonna need to.
But. It's a very minimal cost that if those cards wear out.
Yes, sir. And the the cost right there, about ten bucks per card. It's a little bit more for the ones with the picture, but we won't get them in batches. We'll get them as we need them.
I mean, we could try it around the road card right now and then if we have to go to the pictures, throw the picture.
Yeah, I I don't. Said it would just be a plain card if we don't. That's all. There's no difference. They work the same way.
I'd hate to think that the cards are kind of like getting off the ticket, you know?
Yeah. Start hanging them on the shirt of South County.
Yeah. It happens, right, Sheriff? Right, it happens?
Yes, sir.
So for now, you still picture.
So no Monopoly logo, get out of jail free.
Maybe they want the picture. It might be good if you're ready in a situation, you know?
Maybe H R department can draw them on there real well. I don't know, but. We can go with.
You all want your picture? I mean, if you were like the school, I got your picture. Huh? Yeah.
You guys just for the picture?
And you don't want the county seal on it? Huh? Put seal on one side? I I think benefit board. We lost the picture. We lost. We lost the picture.
Well, the picture's good for them.
Well, in a place like you're, I'm thinking courthouse, okay? We know who works here, but a place like the detention center. Whoever's sitting at the front desk may not know everybody that works there all the time, especially if there's a lot of turnover. Uh, then pictures might do good, but I'm sure they also get an I D from the sheriff's office separately than the. I D from just the time clock. And that one we're talking about is strictly for time clock. I mean, if you put their picture on it, obviously it can be used for something else, but. That's what I'm talking about, the time clock. So you wouldn't get one, Commissioners. That's what I was trying to get to. You wouldn't need one for the time clock. But it's a number. How many time clocks would you like me to order if you want me to order? Uh, we have currently eleven. We need to order three.
If you have to take them all to accept the card, it's rather easy to card on everyone.
Well, we can have intermixed. The the treasurer's office would prefer not to, as I understand it from H R department. They would prefer have everybody the same. Which is understandable. I mean, I'm not.
Yeah, absolutely. Everybody the same too. So then we're picking on somebody or picking on the other person, so it's all the same. And then I'll let you all work it out. Whether you want pictures or don't picture.
Well, then I would need the okay to order fourteen time clocks. Uh, and three hundred cards and then we'll figure out which of the cards would work out.
Very minimal on the problem.
Yeah, there's very little difference on the card.
So I would entertain motion to accept the proposal for for time clocks. Um. And authorize you to determine the type of uh. Of um card to be used.
Fourteen time clock?
Fourteen, do it all.
You got any one for the Alex building with that?
No, she she's close enough. She'll clock in here, same as we're doing with the D P S.
Okay.
She has to clock in here and then drive. We can get more, but I don't know how cost effective it is for, you know, a hundred yards.
Fourteen, you know, the left? You okay with fourteen?
You guys made the motion?
I'll make the motion.
All those who say aye, aye. All who oppose. We got. Two things left before we do the building. Uh, three things. One is capital government resolution. And I think I give you, but if I didn't. I got it. And. Karen?
Yeah, sir.
We already approved these vehicles and slightly approved the last year.
Correct, yes, sir.
So. You brought me, the thing is, to get them financed with government capital, we need to choose three, four or five years. What are you recommending?
Uh, uh, you know, four years would be plenty. They don't they don't wanna put a lot of mouths and then they get four or not and then you start spending, because we spend a lot of money at the last. Almost four years on repairs and stuff like that. And at the end of the day, it costs a lot more money too.
So they ordered these last year, but they just.
Yeah, because. But the pandemic caused a lot of issues and. We had to do because we had all some, but it was that that we the guy that. We went with the first time. He didn't come through, so we had to go through somebody from the valley and that's the one that delivered those four patrol cars about two months ago. That the one for Eddie De Leon, we ordered one more year and I had no. And it was, we were getting prospecting because. I guess because he was only one, they were taking the time because sometimes other agencies might order ten and. It's like anything else, you know, more money, the expedite more, but. These people from the valley, they really helped us a lot. That's why we went with them again on on those three.
Your recommendation would be to uh make the purchase of uh.
Four years.
These vehicles through government capital corporation for three to four years.
Yes, sir.
Um, I think stated interest rate three point two six, fifty thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars. And forty cents a year. And that we would need in form of a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion.
So a motion has been made in seconds. Um. All those who say aye, aye. All who oppose at the same time. You'd like to read for it and then.
Thank you.
I gotta give this to Margie to make the copy, then get it back to you.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time and understanding.
Well, thank you. So now. We got two ambulances financed and. The only thing different is that we didn't add the warranty, which was twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um, to the bill, so. We either cut a check for Mr. Gates for twenty-eight thousand dollars or we amend the minutes to reflect the twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Just cut a check. Just cut a check?
Huh?
You want I amend it? Just cut a check.
I mean, he did the loan for the twenty-eight thousand and he can pay a twenty thousand or or we can. Or. And then we save the money for next year. But that's the. The ambulance just came in, but they didn't add the warranty. So what he asked us to do, what he asked us to do is just change this to reflect the loan amount. Do you have the amount?
Okay.
Uh, twenty-eight thousand seven forty-six. And fifty-seven. Yeah, but but we need authorization for our minutes to match the record. So we either cut him a check for twenty-eight thousand dollars or we change the minute. Cut or I change the minute to reflect. Twenty-eight thousand. we change the minute, cut around, change the minutes to reflect twenty-eight dollars, and then save him that money for next year.
We do that, I mean, we can do that, reflect that.
Uh, motion's been made to add the twenty-eight thousand dollars on the invoice to um, the minutes, the second. No further reflection, although the favor say aye.
Aye.
That would be it, uh, what else is left? Oh, we got some budget amendments? Huh?
JP three.
This law, JP three bought some shirts that they've been using, one ninety-six, one ninety-six put off to the jail of fun. So it's just like a hundred fifty dollar business, we just give Mary his authorization to move it around. It's not it's not that much, and Mary has a few here, you may wanna look at.
I'll make the motion when we get Mary.
Make those budget amendments, they're just within the fund, it's not much. You know that she can just move money around within the fund, so that's really easy. All right. Motion's been made the second. Although the favor say aye.
Aye.
So now we got minutes, report, and bill. What 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 date?
We got it.
Really? Wow, wow.
It's like it's getting raining.
I'm happy.
We're gonna get some rain.
Okay, please give me a minute.
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes as presented.
A motion's been made, here is second. Present the. We have the present, or the minutes as presented, although the favor say aye.
Aye.
Although the opposed.
Report, they were all.
Report.
I make the motion to accept this presented.
Motion's been made to accept the report as presented. Here is second. Although the favor say aye.
Aye. My license, the bills. Judge.
Yeah.
There's a lot of sanitation.
We're here to promote. What is the prison?
One.
What?
Name.
Individual.
I don't know, just. No, no, not a pokey. Twenty-one.
It's probably more of a ten or six hundred gallons.
I don't know. Eight thousand dollars.
What?
Eight thousand dollars. That's hard.
I think we have a lot of sanitizer, and we want to act, nobody else gets sanitizer, so we give up what we have in the county. So a lot of more in field for sanitizer. Anywhere, because they have like sixty-three gallons, and and they can fill in, fill our.
They gave you painters, huh?
Now, there's a lot of license, but long as I have me the next week.
They gave us. They gave.
There's a work just took fifteen gallons over there.
Yo may, yes, yeah, I got them at the yard, and we get up.
But they still a little smaller, still.
They gave us some, they gave me some.
They gave you a little more.
Yeah, they got you. Doesn't move, makes it. Okay. Yes. Okay.
Just the party members just emailed, they're having a walk-up session tomorrow with the party today. All pre-registration, everything, that's always on time. I'll post that, it seems like it.
It's a it's a maximum alert, I think it's a maximum alert.
It's not a sign, you put something and post it, this is just written out. That's an email message, but it seems like it's got uploaded.
We have the maximum alert of. Some people may test it so many times. And.
What?
Like if you get tested positive, and then you go, you're okay, but you're always, I mean, negative, and then you're always, you go again, and you can come up positive, right? There's no guarantee. No guarantee.
The main thing is if you get tested positive, pay it home, it goes by.
Yeah.
You don't expect anybody. And possibly, especially like the party, all the people that are out there, active on, yeah, they're drinks, they're gonna get really forward on all of it. The store, don't speak of the store, I think it, everybody can do. And one of the things that people need to not be ashamed of, I mean, there's no, you know, food, water, anything that they eat. Rather than somebody else giving you sex, you're all hot.
Yeah.
And I think that's what I'm saying, people are, and the problem is, how do I eat, how do I take care of my kids?
Most of you don't know who they are.
So that's the next one, I'll be able to.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Did you see the party thing now?
No. Oh, yeah, I got it, yeah. Okay.
Do you want to put this on the website? Do you want to put it on the website? It's written on the Department of Law, help, website. But there's gotta be, like, people in here, formative. You know, what is that, what are you doing?
Yeah.
I think you're okay. So what time I gonna start tomorrow? Figure. I don't know, you. Are you talking about the testing or the other? I don't know if they're gonna be on that.
That car ain't. That even on the sign. That ain't a tante. That's it.
There you go. I'll make the motion, we approve the meeting as a party, uh, the the bill, uh, motion's been made, expect uh, to approve the building as presented. Although the favor say aye, although the opposed and sign is super, uh, the general motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Expect. Although the favor say aye.
Aye.